If I go do something else because somebody else told me to do it and a waste of time now you're wasting my time I don't like that I rather waste my own time. I am so sorry for this bad lighting but hey y'all welcome back to my channel now this is not how I want to start this video like it is four forty-five and I just got dang in my Chick-fil-A and I was not in the mood because I had not eaten all day. I just left my hair appointment I got my hair done well as y'all can tell by the title this is gonna be kinda like my first week of school for this new semester. It is and isn't at the same time it's not the official first week but starting tomorrow we get early is when we get early access to the classes. And I have to stay early on but I try to stay ahead of my assignments because like life is just so busy that I can get behind like in a blink of an eye. But um right now I'm at Hobby Lobby taking a speech class and I'm taking an art class. Um the speech class I need for my bachelor's degree for my major and the art class is just the extracurricular that I have to take for my associates. So yeah I'm at Hobby Lobby and I was gonna go to Target first because I need to get some time from Target too. But I decided that since I got Chick-fil-A and Hobby Lobby is right here. I could just come here because I know for a fact they have what I need I need like specific pencils and like um sketchbook I have a sketchbook at home but it's not the one that it says in like the course materials which I'm pretty sure doesn't really matter but I really wanna like you know B to a T so yeah that's what I'm supposed to go in here and get and then I'm gonna get and then I'm gonna go to Target and pick up a few things from there and then that's it I don't feel like going nowhere as my head hurts so bad. And it's so funny my head did not start hurting until I got in the Chick-fil-A line and the line was taking so long like I'm like the Chick-fil-A line never take that long. But yeah I'm just ready to get this over with and go home because it's already about two five o'clock yeah I know it's still getting dark very early. Oh look at that little golden baby oh he's a cute puppy. Yeah let me go get this over with no more waste of time. Um sorry about this lighting but it is literally the next day. Um yesterday while I was in Hobby Lobby and I was waiting in checkout line I know their machines was down or something he had to like enter in like buy the number and then I only had like six people working but anyways I was in line and I literally felt so sick to my stomach that I thought I was gonna pass out like that's how bad it was. Um but after I finally like checked out and got in the car I could not finish my shopping I couldn't go to Target I couldn't do anything. I just drove home and on my way home I literally like I almost dropped my car like three times because I kept I kept dozing off like I was so tired. And like I got home like I was so tired I didn't even took my keys out the car my keys stayed in the car all night but it's okay because my car was in the garage but that's how tired I was like I went in the house and I put my purse down and I laid on the sofa with my blanket and I fell asleep for the rest of the night. That's why I slept dead last night on the sofa because I could not I didn't have any to do upstairs. Like my stomach was hurting my head was hurting everything was just it just wasn't wasn't where it needs to be. But then I woke up at like two or three AM and my hip was hurting like I don't know if y'all know but I have a hip injury from a few years ago. And like it woke me up and my entire leg was like throbbing I'm like yeah I really like can't it get any worse so I went upstairs which I really didn't wanna go upstairs. To take my medicine that I have for it and eventually it like stopped you know it stopped hurting. And I was ready to go back to sleep but then I woke up again I like five something with a cramp and like the cramp when I say cramp I'm not talking about like cramps I'm talking about a leg cramp and it was so bad I was crying. Like I couldn't move like it's so painful so I had to lay there basically crying until it like eased up and I could like stretch. Because that's how bad it was and to make it even worse my alarm is supposed to go off at like six thirty so now I felt like I didn't I wasn't getting enough sleep. I did go back to sleep I know that much but I did wake up at like mm I'm gonna say like seven something. But yeah that's how my morning went y'all I don't know what that was about um part of it probably was just me being exhausted from self-duty or whatever but I slept like I slept like I didn't eat dinner I didn't drink anything I went straight to sleep and that was it. But yeah so other than that the date my day has been pretty okay right now it's like four it's four fifteen um I just got home from work. And like I said yesterday I didn't get to like go to Target and stuff like I wanted to so I'm gonna do that today. I'll have to go grocery shopping today so I need to make sure I have that list too. So yeah that's what we're about to do I could have just went straight to Target from work at the one closer but one I don't really like going to that one two I don't like going anywhere outside of like work with my uniform on. And I also just wanna be comfortable I still think I lost my money so. But yeah y'all that's what happened I'm still gonna show y'all like what I got from Hobby Lobby too. Um but yeah we're about to go in here about to change clothes get some comfy clothes and then go to Targets. And then I'll show you what I got and then later we're gonna go grocery shopping which I don't know if I'm gonna take y'all along with me for that. But yeah hopefully I have time to do like a quick little not really study session tonight it's gonna be more just like I like to like write down all of my due dates for everything. Especially with me getting a new planner too that's usually what I do on the first day just write down all the due dates. And then stuff like that. So I literally put on like the chillest outfit I could find just some gray sweatpants. My gray zip-up running t-shirt like I ain't got time I ain't trying to impress nobody. Got my keys got my water about to go to Target. As y'all can see it's dark now actually wasn't in there that long it just gets dark fast it's just six eleven. So I got everything I was looking for but of course I'll go over with y'all when I get home but I'm about to go pick my husband up so we can go grocery shopping and knock this out. I'm excited to go just because we've never been together like in the afternoon to grocery shop. And I went for the first time in the afternoon like a couple of weeks ago and it was so peaceful. So hopefully it's like that again considering it's what Wednesday. So yeah I didn't record too much in Target just because it was like it's that rush hour where everybody's trying to get in and get out and get home after work. But it's no biggie y'all know I'm sure what I got. Yeah my room is a freaking mess like I'm not even gonna show y'all because it's so embarrassing because I've had the like it's only Wednesday and I've already had like a terrible week not terrible but physically motivationally like it's just not there I love my new tripod downstairs so y'all like popped up or something. But yeah like my room is a mess because my life is a mess and vice versa. So TMI but y'all my cycle came on last week and when I say I was in the house in the bed for the entire weekend and then had time to do a twenty-four hour shift on Monday. Like I just haven't had time to just really like you know recoup and get it together so I got clothes all over my floor right now because there's stuff everywhere I'm not even gonna show y'all. But we won't get together whenever that's what I'm eating now they're so good. Okay so also I want y'all to know that it's gonna be a change of plans we're not gonna grocery shopping tonight because the grocery store that we go to closes at eight. And it's already about to be seven and it takes us like thirty minutes to get there we'll give or take depending which way we go. So since I had everything I need for dinner tonight we're just gonna go to tomorrow. But with that being said I'm gonna go ahead and show y'all the stuff that I got from Target. And from Hobby Lobby yesterday the first thing that I got was a new planner I didn't necessarily need a new planner but the one that I have I got I'm gonna say on October so it wasn't it doesn't start on January it starts July twenty twenty four twenty twenty-three so it goes from July twenty twenty-three to June twenty twenty-four. So I will have to buy a new one anyway to go to the end of this year so I decided to go ahead and get a new one anyway just to like you know I don't know I feel like I need a new one I am gonna keep this one I haven't decided what I wanna use the rest of it for I think I'm either gonna use it for work or like rough draft so like write out stuff and then when it's actually solidified then put another one. Or if I want it to be a content planner I don't know yet but I'm not gonna throw it away because that's a waste this is what it looks like let me turn this brightness down. Alright this is what it looks like. Just like I like the one they have like this kinda like weather cover and then the stripe. Real cute and I showed y'all a few of the ones I picked up. This is the one I ended up getting because y'all know I love this color. Let me see if it'll focus. Yeah y'all know I love this kinda like I don't really know the correct like this cornflower gray blue type of vibe and also had like the light blue and the flowers everything is so pretty as y'all can see. And then um it does have like the weatherproof type of thing and it's actually inside of it so even though you open it it's a whole another page. This page is also like weatherproof too slightly it's a and then it does come with a ruler which my other one didn't come with and also come with these stickers. My other one came with stickers but they're different stickers that I'm probably still gonna use for this one but they're super cute real simple. Um and then another thing that my other one didn't have is like this folder pocket thingy. Yeah it has like a little folder pocket right here. And then I really like the fact that the little like months tabs are like gradient so like dark light and really like um other than that everything else is the same as my last one next thing I got is just a regular college room notebook this isn't the foster one or just the one subject. I'm not I don't think I'm gonna need a notebook for my art class but I think I'm gonna need one for my other classes I'm taking. And I like I y'all know I have an iPad but I don't like taking notes on my iPad for specific things like I'll take notes. Like when I first started college I took notes on my iPad but I didn't like it like I got the paper light string I got the fine point pencil tips I got all of that and I still just wasn't it wasn't like what I wanted. Plus nothing is like paper and pencil I'm a paper and pencil girl like even like nowadays in class any classes that I take paper and pencil I hate taking digital notes I don't know I just feel like I don't have control over that. I don't know and even like growing up like I probably could show y'all pictures of me in like high school where I had the best notes in the class like I did the colorful notes the pictures the diagrams all this extra stuff because that's just how I enjoy taking notes so I am still very much like that and it's been a while since I bought a college room notebook. Like this like the spiral one I have been using like competition notebooks. And also like I don't know like I don't know it's something about pen and paper that's just gonna I think this has to do with my handwriting because I love my handwriting I get compliments on my handwriting all the time. And the iPad doesn't really reciprocate the same energy like I can write something on paper and then write on my iPad and it won't look the same I don't like that. I do like using my iPad however when I know it's a type of subject that I have to refer to my notes a lot. Because it's easier to just you know type in what I'm looking for and it'll go directly to it. I do know that when I was taking I forgot what class I was taking but I started taking notes on my laptop actually because it was easier to just like type it out. But I really wanted to do you know notebook because I don't know it's just it makes me happy I like to write. So go along with that I got these Pilot gel pens. I this is the smallest pen they have I prefer really small pens this is a point three eight millimeter. But I actually need to buy some more but these are my absolute favorite pens these are the Pilot another Pilot pen Juice Up O Three is the point it's the zero point three millimeter pen. And it's super tiny like it's so tiny that you cannot write on your skin with it if you try to it hurts. But these so this is what point zero point three these zero point three eight. I cannot find anything smaller than zero point three eight in a like regular store. I don't know any art stores around here besides the regular like Michael's and stuff I don't know if they have them but these are Japanese pencils. Um I ordered them off of Amazon they come in a pack of ten I think I only have like four now. But I absolutely love these pens because I write small and like the way that I write it looks like it was like typed and I love that. So yeah it's the Pilot Japan Juice Up O Three I love this pen. I actually need to order some more because these are the only pens that I actually enjoy writing with like I be judging everybody pen. Oh yeah I got my eyebrows done I stopped thinking my eyebrows done I I I had to I had to end it. Anyways I also picked up these highlighters these are the erasable highlighters and I have highlighters y'all but I don't have pastel highlighters okay I don't have pastel highlighters these are so cute and I cannot wait to use them and they're erasable like yeah these are gonna be so cute unrelated school I got a paddle brush because I don't own a paddle brush. And I know it's gonna help me when I rub my hair because I did not rub my hair yeah when I told y'all I came in I went to sleep. I did put on my bonnet when I woke up uh I woke up once at like nine-ish and I did put on my bonnet. But other than that yeah I was out like a light I picked up me and my husband the Ollie Pop. He's just a regular women's lawn person I got cream soda. They don't sell these everywhere and I'm trying to figure out why like they're so good. And the last thing I got is for dinner tonight if I could get um I just got some chicken broth and crammed chicken because I'm gonna make baked chicken. Yellow rice and I'm thinking cornbread and like some green beans or something. So yeah that's everything I got from Target now what I got from Hobby Lobby. Like I said I still have to go back and get two more sketchbooks but I didn't realize how big they were like eighteen by twenty-four I didn't realize how big they is. So I got this sketchbook I probably need to figure out some small ones because this is a lot of paper I don't think I'm gonna use all of this. But I have a sketchbook but I don't know I wanted a new one so this is just the sketch. Regular schmuggler they go with sketchbook they have these in different sizes. But the class doesn't like specify the pressure is like it's a sketchbook you're just gonna sketch out whatever you're drawing. And I got this one because I feel like I like this size like the landscape. But then I can also turn it this way and I feel like it's giving and it's giving it's giving portrait. So that's the one I got it was thirteen ninety-nine yeah I forgot how expensive art supplies can be like I must have fucked up that okay. Um I got these graphite drawing pencils I have graphite pencils they're probably old but I don't know where they're at so. These are the graphite drawing pencil they were just one ninety-nine came in a pack of two I should have got a pencil sharpener I didn't get a pencil sharpener I'm gonna have to get one. And then these are the vine charcoal sticks I was so confused I was like vine what what is that I don't know what that is. So I looked it up and it's basically like just a rod of charcoal. Anybody who knows me in like high school not even just high school yeah high school when I first started high school when I did art charcoal is my favorite media. Like I ate down on the charcoal I ate down on the charcoal portrait every time. Especially like mixed media so like charcoal and like pastels that was really cute. And then I grabbed an eraser this is just the white vinyl eraser real basic the best eraser that I had it. And then I got the needed erasers if you're not like um it's art and don't know what I'm talking about so these are needed erasers think of it like think of it like Play-Doh it's Play-Doh but it erases. And then the more you like play with it it like gets rid of the pencil stuff that's in it so yeah that's everything I got from Hobby Lobby. Yeah as y'all can see I didn't mention this much like when I was in there I really thought I was about to pass out because my head was hurting so bad and I felt sick. But yeah right now I'm about to do what I said I was gonna do as far as just getting well first of all I'm gonna clean my room. I'm like I should clean my room let's say that I should clean my room and then I'm gonna go through see if I have access to class yet and start putting in my to-do dates. I might anyways I'll see y'all tomorrow good morning. It is nine seventeen right now and I shouldn't be like at work already. But what was supposed to happen today is not happening today so um I don't wanna go. Unless they call me ask me like to do something or they need me to do something I'm not going. Cause I just feel like I have other stuff that I need to do and I don't wanna go to just be like sitting around. That's just me I really hate wasting time on like someone else account if that makes sense so basically like if I'm at home I'm not doing anything I can't waste my own time but if I go do something else because somebody else told me to do it and a waste of time now you're wasting my time I don't like that I rather waste my own time. But yeah so today I'm just gonna try to get back on track I guess because like I told y'all yesterday I'm kinda like my life is kind of a mess right now not like metaphorically speaking but physically like my room's still a mess and then cleaned last night because after I got done cooking I was tired. And I just kinda chilled on the sofa until we got to sleep but we were supposed to play the game too but literally came in here and they gave me the update so I was updating we literally went and laid down and I fall asleep but it's cool. So the plan for today is to of course my hands are so ashy but it's of course quite clean up stuff and then like I told y'all before about putting the due dates in my planner and then I'm gonna try to go ahead and get a head start. Um I don't know if it's in this last video that I have yet to finish editing and upload but I know I previously mentioned about my study sessions and how I like to do them live. Well not like to live I would want to do them live because I've only ever did one. And I don't know I don't know if I liked it like I didn't mind it but it was over a it was like an hour long. And I know people who do like two three four hour study sessions. And I don't think I could do that not because I can't do that but because I don't think I can be in a place that's quiet enough for that long I don't know yet I'm still figuring out but I do wanna try the live version just to like get rid of the editing aspect of it I don't know. I have some research to do but that won't be for a while I don't think because I probably won't do it for these first few weeks. So I'm excited to do that though but other than that I do I probably am gonna go to like Hobby Lobby or something today to go ahead and get the other sketchbooks that I need. And then we're actually gonna go grocery shopping today hopefully if I don't have like go on to work for something crazy. We're actually gonna go grocery shopping today I'm excited y'all I love grocery shopping. Especially like I don't know I just love grocery shopping I love food so. And other than that like that's pretty much all I have planned for today. Like it doesn't sound like a lot but watch I make it more complicated than what it is. Because that's just what I do apparently. I keep saying to clean my room but like if I'm being honest my room isn't dirty there's just a bunch of clothes on the floor. And a bunch of trash on my desk like that's literally it and then like my notebooks and stuff that I just bought but everything else is just either out of place or just like slightly out of place just to be pushed back or something. This is why I want to get like a a basket or a clothes basket just for my uniforms because I try to keep my room clean throughout the week but when I have a tough day or when I have like a tired day where I just wanna go home and go to bed. I take my uniform off and either throw them off or throw them on the trash I'm literally sitting on clothes right now it's so bad. But I'm trying to get better I swear anyways. I'm so hungry right now I don't know what was going on me last night like when I cooked dinner last night and we ate. I only ate a little bit which I knew I was gonna eat only a little so I only put a little on my plate. But like I don't know at first I didn't have an appetite at all but then when I started eating that chicken I was like this chicken good. I snapped with that I burnt my hand like three different times last night because I put the pan that I cooked the chicken in I also use the same pan to like bake it. So I put it in the oven and so when I took it out I took it out with the oven mitt because of course common sense right? But after that when I took the top off and got the spoon I grabbed it with my hand I'm like why did I do that? And then I turned around and grabbed the lid for the pot with my other hand I'm like why do I keep doing that? And like my mom was on the phone she was like what's wrong I keep grabbing the pot with my hand it's hot. And I did that three different times I'm like yeah I'm just about to get out the kitchen that's how you know I'm tired because why do I keep doing the same thing and expecting different results like no something's wrong um luckily it's nothing crazy like you can't even tell but like this whole hand was hurting and then like these fingers were hurting. But right now my thumb just itches right here luckily nothing crazy though. I'm thinking about how I should get my hair next I know I wrote down how I wanted it. I was gonna get some more um spring twists but I don't know if that's what I want I might just end up getting regular knotless braids again. Anyways let's go eat I don't know what I'm gonna eat though. Let's go find out. Okay y'all um that took a lot longer than I expected because of the mini concert I was having but um I am so tired I'm about to take a nap I'm not gonna lie it's just twelve fifty-four though um hopefully I can just chill for the rest of the day and then we're gonna go grocery shopping later and yeah today's gonna be pretty chill I hope. I did clean my room and um everything's kinda organized now. But yeah that's pretty much it for right now. I still think I'm gonna try to go to Hobby Lobby today if not today definitely tomorrow. But yeah that's it um I got all my due dates down and highlighted. Surprisingly it's not as much. Surprisingly it's not as much as it usually is but I feel like it's not as much but each assignment is more. If that makes sense I don't know if that makes sense but yeah. I'm about to just go in my room and kinda just hang out probably take a nap. And I'll talk to y'all later. Okay I want to show y'all we just got back from the grocery store I didn't do a haul because I didn't really get much that's like interesting the only thing I got that I really wanna show y'all is two things. These well first I got the ingredients for this like trail mix that I've been seeing on TikTok. Uh it's like the very berry Cheerios with like the baby food it's the very berry Cheerios the yogurt melts and like the soft like crackers kinda like um like it's kinda like the cereal like the chick like the Lucky Charms cereal not the marshmallow like the other part. And then freeze dried strawberries but they were out of freeze dried strawberries I'm just gonna get some probably tomorrow. But I don't know when we're gonna make it yet so I guess we'll see I wanna make it on TikTok but I don't know when I'm gonna get the strawberries anyways I did get me some of these naked juices the minis um I used to love these when I was in like high school and stuff. Specifically the blue machine one but this is a variety pack a variety twelve pack I'm gonna put some in my little refrigerator right here hopefully they fit. But I always had to see these some people say like they're not that good but I mean they taste good so. Got my dinner I'm really not that hungry so it looks like a little. But I got some yellow rice with baked chicken that I made like creamy baked chicken with onions and bell peppers and then green beans I know it's not a lot. And then some rolls which just looks like a lot but y'all I'm gonna sleep for bread okay I eat bread for breakfast and dinner. That's my downfall that's one of the reasons I'm having a little bit I freaking love bread. But yeah so that's my dinner but I said I'm really not that hungry that's why it's not a lot. And I also got my Ollie Pop this is the orange squeeze I haven't tried this one before. Says our orange squeeze bring in veins orange soda with a citrus vitamin C rich blend of natural ingredients. Clementine and mandar juices collide with a hint of lemon to produce a bright twist on the nostalgic classic. So we're about to see if it tastes like I think I heard someone say it tastes like orange cream like the ice cream and that's it. It's good it just tastes like orange soda. I personally am not a big fan of carbonated drinks like that's one of the reasons I stopped drinking soda I stopped drinking soda like when I was in high school. And for years I didn't drink like soda unless it was like I felt like I had to because like there was only available. But it was very rare I would just drink water but I don't like heavily carbonated beverages so like sparkling water I'm not a big fan of sparkling water I'm not a big fan of spray I like the way I like the way Sprite tastes. But I don't like carbonated beverages, so I would drink a flat drink any day, but carbonated beverages are not really a big one, cuz I just don't like the way, by the way it makes me feel, I just don't like it, I feel like I'm drinking static. But this isn't overly carbonated, so it's not that bad. I know, when something is overly carbonated, when I drink it, it gives me hiccups. That's one of the reasons I don't like McDonald's Sprite, because anytime I drink it, that fresh sip always, always, always gives me hiccups and it's so annoying. But yeah, I'm about to eat dinner, play the game a little bit, and I don't know, I'll talk to y'all either tonight or tomorrow because I have to get up in the morning because we have a mission. At six. I might actually go to the gym tomorrow. I usually don't just cuz of like the way the times are set up, but I don't know, we'll see what time I go to sleep because it's already about to be eight. So we'll see. Cheers. Okay, y'all, today's Saturday and I didn't do anything yesterday and then I've been pretty chill all day today. It is six oh two and we're about to go to an ice show. Uh, I just want to show y'all my outfit though. I just have on my HU Bear California, 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 California sweater and then I have on my cargo from, I think Aeropostale. They're like white like, and then I'm gonna be wearing my new shoes that I got for Christmas with my bubble coat. So I really, I seen it like literally a couple hours ago, I was like, oh my god, that'd be fun, cuz we didn't have anything to do today. And like this, it was so pretty today, but we, since we didn't have anything to do, we couldn't really enjoy it, so I was like, you know, let's just go out, I guess. But we also have to go to Walmart after, so it's kinda like, you know, it works out in the end. But yeah, that's what I'm about to do. Like I said, nothing really crazy happened today. I did do a bit of studying for one of my classes, but nothing like as, not as much as I would have liked, but tomorrow is like, it's no games tomorrow, tomorrow we getting stuff done.